We are recording.
All right, thank you, Jared. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan McKernan, the Director of the Division of Marine Fisheries. And tonight, we have a set of public hearing items for your comment. They pertain to groundfish, including the activity of gill netting, the squid fishery, and also the scup fishery. We are going to take some of the items out of order, which was just mentioned before the recording started. We're going to proceed to the squid and scup issues first, recognizing that some of the folks who are on the call are probably more interested in that. We will be covering all of the items, but we're going to go to those squid and scup issues first. Jared, why don't we bring up the first, actually, no, let me come through the protocols. So this hearing is being held under the provisions of Mass General law, Chapter 30A, as well as the Division of Marine Fisheries statutes at Chapter 130, 17A, 80, and 104, but taking these public comments on amendments to Sections 4, 6, 8 of the 322 Code of Mass Regulations. We're going to accept public comments through Friday, January 14th, which is a week from tomorrow. Please send the comment to the marine.fish@mass.gov email address or by hard mail to my attention at the Boston office address. Please directly email me or the staff solely because we usually go right into that mailbox and hopefully we're assured that that is the extent of the comments. Sometimes emails have gone to individual staff members and those staff members, according to myself, haven't always forwarded those to the person who's collecting these comments. So that's why we like to have one email address for each event. The virtual rules of engagement, we've just briefly, we create these public hearings to give you an opportunity to learn about the subject, but also to submit opinions, comments, or arguments on specific amendments being proposed and how to maybe amend those or whether you agree with those or not. We will take comments on other matters at the conclusion of the hearing if time permits. I suspect time will permit tonight. Everyone is going to be muted during the presentation. After the end of each presentation, we will first accept clarifying questions regarding the proposals and then we'll invite the public comment on those proposals. As far as the chat functions, we disable those in favor of having verbal questions. That way, folks who are listening in can hear those questions and also because sometimes the back and forth of a chat comment can be distracting for those who are trying to watch the ongoing presentations. We require everyone to use the raise hand function and we will recognize you and unmute you in the order that you raise your hand. We'll give you a few minutes, preferably two minutes, but given the small audience, we could probably go a little bit longer tonight. And of course, we'll allow follow-up questions after others have had an opportunity to speak. It's not necessary for you to provide verbal comment during this hearing. It's okay if you if you learn through this process, even reach out to us for clarifying questions if you want to make a letter, a written comment to us that's more informed, that's perfectly acceptable, as long as you get it in by the deadline. And again, we do prefer that you write your comments to us as well as give us this verbal because we don't have to summarize your comments for the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission. We'll have a chance to read all of your comments word for word and it's always more effective. I'm sure those Marine Fisheries members, those commission members on the call would agree with that. And finally, we are recording this event and it'll be posted on our YouTube channel by tomorrow morning. So like I said before, we are going to take the items out of order. We're going to start with the squid issue first and then go to scup and then we're going to swing back to groundfish. So what you see on the screen now, just a brief summary of our squid fishery. We allow small mesh trawling for squid from April 23rd to June 9th in waters south of Cape Cod and around the islands, at least in those areas that are open. The area within Buzzet Bay doesn't allow any net fishing by statute and by regulation going back over 100 years. And the area just off of Cape Cod from Mashpee over to Chatham also was closed by the legislature by special act and then we adopted it as a regulation of about 40, 50 years ago or so. So we do have this, this fishery, auto trawlers are allowed to deploy nets with small mesh openings during a specific season. That season is April 23rd through June 9th. The director does has the discretion to extend the season beyond June 9th. And this was a program that I personally worked on early in my career when I was a sea sampler, convincing former directors that this was a logical way to go, especially if the bycatch seemed to vary from year to year. Certainly, the squid fishery does vary year to year in terms of its abundance. There's high variability in the presence of squid by an order of about fivefold. If you look at the historical landings within Massachusetts waters, there are wild fluctuations in the success of that fishery year to year. Next slide, Jared. So the regulation in question is one that gives the director discretion to extend the fishery beyond the June 9th last day. And you know, this has been a challenge for us over the last few years administratively. It's difficult. What it entails is us scrambling to obtain the freshest amount of sea sampling data that we can find for working in this area. We no longer have a dedicated staffer who does sea sampling. We instead rely on the National Marine Fisheries Service Seasampling Program, which is quite robust and performs many trips, you know, each year as part of the extensive Northeast Fishery Science Center Sea Sampling Program. You know, one of the challenges is getting this data in an unaudited form. It's late breaking. We scramble and then we make decisions. And what we've learned over the past 10 years or so is that the, while the catch rates vary of the directed species, the bycatch species don't vary as much. And in fact, you can see here in the historical summary of what we've done in the last eight years. We have extended it, sorry, seven years. We've extended it three times between seven and nine days. And on four occasions of four of those years, we haven't extended it. And so based on a very comprehensive report that was produced by Brad Shondelmeier and Bill Hoffman, which I would strongly urge any of the folks who might be on the call and are interested in the squid fishery to review. Based on what we see in that report, we're pretty comfortable with this fishery being extended, you know, for at least until the 15th of the month. And that's what we're proposing. Because what we actually see is that if the squid around, the boats stick around and the catch rates are actually higher and the proportional levels of discard is actually lower when that, during that late season part of the fishery. And so we think that this is kind of a Solomon-like approach. I know that there's some folks, you know, on the, on the Antucket specifically, who have, you know, urged us, you know, not to extend that fishery. In fact, many have lobbied the legislature to enact legislation to ban this fishery, at least in part. We don't think that's necessary. And so we think it would be a logical and kind of a streamlining approach to simply extend this fishery by regulation to June 15th and actually eliminate the language that gives the director discretion to extend it. It would certainly reduce the burden on us to scramble to get that information. It would allow the fishermen or the participants to plan ahead accordingly. In some years, there won't be fishing till June 15th if the abundance of squid isn't sufficient to fish profitably. But we think that based on the extensive sea sampling data analysis that was performed by Brad and Bill, that this is a safe and a safe approach, a reasonable approach based on conservation of all the species of squid as well as the other non-target species. So I would also like to say that there are two excellent videos. One's a little longer than the other. It's about a 35-minute video that's also on our website that the public could view. You know, Brad gives an extensive presentation on the report and I would urge folks to view that as well. Go ahead, Jared.
If I may interrupt for a second, while we have disabled the chat function for people to go back and forth, we can utilize that and individuals can see that function. And Julia Kaplan has copied the link to that presentation into that chat function. So anyone from the public who wishes to take that link, to go bookmark it for future viewing, should have that available to them through the chat box.
Yeah, and Jared, I was able to find the YouTube video by just typing into Google DMF YouTube squid. And so it came up and the 35-minute version is a little bit longer and better. In fact, we might want to take down that shorter version. The shorter version was a presentation in the internal DMF seminar series. So it's an excellent, excellent presentation of the longer report. The report is called Technical Report 74, TR 74, and that we can also share that with the public. But it's been on our, up on our website for a few years now. So anyway, that is our proposal. You know, we still will be paying attention to the long-term trends in the fishery, working with our federal partners at the Northeast Fishery Science Center. But I think that based on the analysis that was performed on the five years of sea sampling and the fact that those data reveal very similar trends, overall performance measures to the work that I personally did at the beginning of my career on a much smaller scale. You know, we think we have a pretty good handle on the fishery. So without getting into, you know, a full-blown analysis of the squid fishery, this is pretty simple. In essence, we're saying we'd like to extend the fishery six more days. We want to eliminate the option for the director to extend and make it a little bit simpler in terms of a management approach. So why don't we take some clarifying questions if necessary at this time, Jared?
Hello? I have a question. Now, I have a question regarding this. If the state is able to push this through, how often will this be reviewed to bring the power back to, bring the power back to Mr. McKernan? So like if you guys do decide to put this through, you know, are you going to look at it in three years and say, oh, we should go back to our old system because it does turn out to be something that is, you know, need to be monitored on a year-by-year basis? Where would that be going?
Right, Jared Silver here. I handle a lot of the regulatory issues for the agency. And I wouldn't have a specific timeline to look at that, but I could tell you as a matter of practice, we look at the performance of our fisheries on an annual basis and determine what, if any, rule changes need to occur in any of these fisheries. And if there were something seemingly wrong with the approach taken, I think that between our commission, our internal audits of our commercial fisheries, we'd analyze that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would also add that the director does have the discretion to take emergency actions and also to condition permits. So you know, if there was a sort of an unprecedented and unexpected, you know, occurrence that was just something we've never seen before in terms of bycatch or whatever, the authority is there to take an action. It's just that the regulations, as it's written now, kind of set up this expectation on the part of the fleet and a part of the public for the agency to do this almost instantaneous determination of fishery performance. And my point is, it's not really worth it. What we've seen is that the fishery is predominantly, you know, I'll use the word clean. Bycatch is something that I'm comfortable with, the level of bycatch. And you can see that in the reports. It's mostly undersized scup. That is the most dominant, you know, bycatch species. And what I'm, what I'm, you know, like I mentioned a Solomon-like approach. What I'm suggesting is, in terms of like a compromise, let's do away with those extensions, but let's give the fleet, you know, the six days and they can plan accordingly. You know, it's pretty difficult for us to get, to make sense of a whole lot of phone calls on June 8th. What are we going to do? What are we going to do? And it puts a lot of pressure on us. I don't think that kind of response, that kind of mobilization is worth it in terms of the conservation benefits. And because it's our view that if there is, if squid are abundant, the fleet will be there. If they're not, really, the squid does, the fleet does not, does not, doesn't fish there. They go further offshore. It's, they don't linger in state waters. They don't scratch around. At least that's been our experience. So if no other clarifying questions, then we can take comments pro con on the proposal.
Bob DiCosta. Can you hear me?
I can, Bob.
I have some comments about this proposal. My concern is that in the last seven years, you've only extended it four times. Excuse me, three times in the last seven years. Those four years that you didn't extend it, the striped bass in the Antucket Sound usually show up around the, between, or between the 5th and the 10th of June. With our regulations as to be able to fish only inside of three miles, there's really only one area that we can fish and that's Montomo Shoals. Those squid come in through Tucker Nut Shoals and through Muskegon Channel. And they come right up the main channel from Horseshoe over to Tucker Nut Shoal. And that's where the bulk of these draggers are fishing during that time of year. And I can show you firsthand from my records from charters that on the years when it wasn't extended, we had great bass fishing over on the shoals off of Montomo. And the years where it was extended, the bass fishing was not good until the next moon in July because there wasn't enough bait to hold those fish. It's not just, those squid are the food forage for not just strikers, but sea bass, bluefish when they first come into the sound in early June. It's really the primary bait that time of year. And that added six days doesn't sound like much to you guys, but it's a killer to us who rely on these spin fish for our revenue. You know, it's different. I understand that you guys don't want to have the additional work, but I'm sorry, but I feel like that's part of your job. You know, in the years when we have a cold winter and squid haven't shown up yet and you need to extend it, then you need to extend it. But I think it needs to be looked at from year-to-year basis because the detriment to the charter boat fleets, it's great. It's great. And just automatically say, well, we're going to just do this every year. It'll have an adverse effect on my business as well as all the other charter boats that fish the shoal areas for a multitude of species, not to mention what these nets do to the squid mops. If the squitter have done a lot of spawning, you know, how many squid mops have gotten displaced from the bottom? We see them washing up on the beaches around the Antucket all the time. And now there's a study out of Woods Hole that shows that it's 100% mortality rate on these squid mops once they've been dislodged from the bottom. So, you know, I would rather see you just stick with the program you have. I know it's difficult for you guys, but I think this is one of the situations where it's not broken. We should leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Jared, any other comments?
Pete, you're up. He chapped. Hit the unmute button.
How's that?
Got you now.
Okay, great. Hello, everybody. Hope everybody's healthy. Have a good holiday. Anyway, so here we go again. Back to the old squid thing. Been at it a long time. I'm on that squid, mackerel, butterfish advisory panel. I talk to Jason Dimm frequently. And one of the things I just checked on yesterday, just to make sure, and you said you were going to be relying on the National Marine Fisheries Data Report as far as observers. And I know it was like this five years ago, but the rate of discards during that time in the squid fishery is 35%. I mean, the little report that you said, there was very little, you know, very little bycatch. Well, that, I'm not sure how many of those toes were made. But anyway, the federal regulation, the failure regulatory thing says that there is a 35% discard. And that is of a lot of scup. As Bobby said, that time of year, the sea bass come in, the scup come in, the strikers are chasing them. You know, unfortunately, it's tough to fish clean in those situations. You know, they're talking about extending it further on with the global warming and water temperatures rising. You would think the squid would be coming in earlier than later. So I think back to originally, I don't, Dan, you said you worked on it. Why was June 9th selected as the date? When I talked to a lot of the guys that we used to do dive jobs on with the nets and they said after June 9th, around that time, there's so much bycatch that they just left. Is that, is that the reason why?
Once upon a time, the squid fishery was allowed through, I think, July 15th, back at the beginning of my career. Then it was backed up to June 30th. And we backed it up to June 9th with the provision to allow the extension because it was usually, that was the time that by mid-June, when a lot of the squid that were in the catch tended to be the small four-inch tubes and had much lower value. And that's usually what drove a lot of the boats away is the lack of really marketable squid. And we did see an increase in the bycatch of scup during that time. But at the time, scup was overfished and the scup was a conservation concern. It's not a conservation concern at that, to that degree anymore. So the magic of June 9th was, you know, and I proposed the June 9th with the expectation that would be active sea sampling program. And I guess I will reiterate, you know, based on the analysis we've done in the report, we think that six days after June 9th is not problematic in terms of the discard of small squid and the squid size running small and the scup discards becoming excessive, especially if it ends on the 15th. So again, it's a compromise measure that we think is logical. And, you know, I'm comfortable with the report. I hope you have a chance to read the report in terms of, you know, what the conservation needs are for marine fisheries right now. I'm not sure that I want staff to have to spend, you know, a lot of time on whether or not to extend a squid fishery for six days. I appreciate Bob DiCosta's comments and we'll take a look at that if he wants to share those data with us. But I don't know if that's where we want to dedicate a lot of our resources to make, you know, on-the-fly determinations of fishery performance.
Right. Well, again, I know you're talking about a low amount of bycatch that was done by those couple of years. But again, I just want to reiterate that the squid fishery that time of year in that areas have a 35% bycatch. And that's right from, especially if you're going to go by the national, you know, observer program. You know, a lot of people, they look at us and again, nobody can understand. We try to explain to them why, especially at that time of year, we are the only ones, us in the backside of the vineyard that is affected by the small mesh, you know, high discard rates. I mean, they're in Chatham, Harwich, Hyannis, all the way up the backside. Everybody's got the protection of mobile gear. And again, we, you know, we've sought it. We've been seeking that same protection for what, five, six, seven years now? We had two town meetings that put it right up there and asked people what they thought of, you know, having the same protection as 95% of the coast has from May 1st to October 31st. And it was basically a 99.9% vote that we should have the same protection. I know you guys got to, you know, go present it to the commission and depends on what their knowledge of this area. And I know none of them are from the Antucket or the Vineyard. So it's easy to say, eh, who cares what goes on there? But we're just trying to be good stewards of this ocean, of the, you know, the eggs, all the spawning events. And I just, and a lot of the people of the, 99.9% of the people in the Antucket, I'm just passing the word, would just like to see that small mesh inshore fishery on top of our shores, I mean, right up to the beach. In fact, sometimes the guys will go right out to jetty and at the bell buoy, put the net over. It's very disheartening. Anyway, I just wanted to relay what people have been writing at us about. And we said, we're trying, but I would, I'd be the same as Bobby. Leave it where it is. If it shows signs of an exceptional year, but without, again, if you're going to stop the observer coverage, state-funded, then you got to go by what the federal gives you. And again, it's been 35% for years and years. But anyway, go ahead. I'll sign off on that one.
Thank you, Pete. Katie Almeida, you can mute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can, Katie, yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Katie Almeida and I work for the Town Dock out of Point Judith, Rhode Island. And we have some small mesh auto trial vessels that have the mass permit that allow us to fish inside the sound. I'm writing, I'm writing a comment and I'm also speaking in support of this proposal to extend the inshore trout fishery from June 9th to the 15th. I actually did have a chance to read this report, the analysis of the bycatch that Brad had put together. And I did find it promising. For the past five years, I have been witnessing and attempting and attending meetings by people attempting to shut down the commercial fishery. And it's not just inside the sound, but also up to 12 miles of Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. And the motive for that closure has been over the concern of bycatch and forage for recreational fisheries, as you just heard. This report shows that vessels that prosecute this fishery are of a smaller size and have lower bycatch than some of the other fisheries that use the same gear type. It also shows the vessels that have a small amount of bycatch of striped bass, which is also, which is how often embedded complaint from the recreational fishery. In fact, in the presentation, and please correct me if I understood this wrong, it was mentioned that for every 1 million pounds of squid caught in the sound, only 1,000 to 3,000 pounds of striped bass was caught, which is relatively small compared to the recreation, recreational and commercial catch of that species in Massachusetts. Regarding the forage concerns, the report states that it did not find that the squid fishery was affecting striped bass by depleting its forage resource, which would be those, what was mentioned, the bluefish, the scup. And in fact, it showed that cephalopods, in this instance, squid, are only a small amount of the striped bass diet. I completely understand the concern over egg mops, but being that this fishery has a short season inside the sound, combined with the Um, but being that this fishery has a short season inside the sound, combined with the regulatory closures and the untouchable bottom, the report also states that, um, the, the season provides substantial spatial refuge where egg mops remain undisturbed on the bottom. So that was also promising. We've, um, been through this issue at least one time since I've been around at the council level. Um, where bycatch has been brought up as a, as a problem, um, especially the thirty-five percent that was brought up by Pete. Um, we and I attended a, uh, public hearing on Nantucket years ago and, uh, made a public comment. But the report and the analysis and the final determination by NIMs showed that it was not to have, the bycatch was not to have a detrimental impact um, on the forage fishery and squid itself. And it's important reminder that not all boats can fish in this area. And you have to have a certain pro, uh, permit and be of a certain size, a smaller size to fish within that area. I understand that there's lots of public support on Nantucket for shutting down this fishery. But as with other decisions, um, made for in fishery science, the science needs to prevail here. Um, and I do feel good about this report. I feel good about the NIMs reports that come out and I do hope that the department, um, does approve this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie.
You got Ray DeCosta?
Ray DeCosta, you're recognized. You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Got you loud, right?
Awesome. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to start off by saying I'm very encouraged that the, um, councils or whoever has done these reports, that there are, you know, recent reports that are being done and looked at the squid fishery. So one thing, you guys are voting on this on the fourteenth of the month? Correct?
Do by the fourteenth.
Okay, okay. So the public comments do by the fourteenth. Is there any way to extend that to give people a better chance to actually do a dive into these, um, researches before they, you know, go over and write a, um, their recommendation to you guys? Is that, is that possible or no?
So, I mean, the, the recommendation is going to be from me to the commission based on the comments that we get tonight. And I'm trying to telegraph to you and the public that I think that the report, uh, sort of defends the, the decision that the, um, that the catch rates, uh, or the bycatch rates are not problematic. And, uh, and all the other conclusions of the report. And this is, this is more of a compromised position here because what, what I'm kind of coming up with here is a proposal where this fishery won't be extended beyond June fifteenth by me or, or the next director unless there's a rule change. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's half the baby.
The, the reason I'm wondering, man, is, uh, to be honest, it seems like there's some information that's come out here recently that I would want to look at. For instance, what Katie was just speaking to in terms of the striped bass not really using squid that much as a source of forage. I, I find that to be unbelievably false. I mean, I, I, I've done this my entire life. I've fished this sound my entire life. I've pulled fifteen, twenty squid out of a single bass's mouth. I mean, all the way packed in there. The, the fact that we're going to go about this, in my opinion, and just make it to where we're going to fish right to this date is crazy with the way that our sound is warming, with the way that our fish are migrating earlier. It doesn't seem to make any sense. These fish rely on the squid. It's our main bait source left in the sound and around these islands. We live and die with how the squid fishery is. The year that we took nineteen million pounds out of the backside of the island, our fishing was horrible for years to come. And that's, that is our concern. No one in Nantucket is against commercial fishing. You know what has happened is that all these commercial fisheries have been destroyed over the past decade, two decades, what have you. And this is the last refuge. So I understand the frustration, especially from someone like Katie's point. And I could see why she wants it to go through. However, I have a massive problem with some of the way that the data is collected and found. For instance, the observer program, I do not believe in wholeheartedly. Can you imagine getting on a boat and going offshore with a couple of guys from Point Judith who don't look like they're the nicest guys in the world and then trying to take information that could in turn hurt their overall livelihood? It doesn't happen. This isn't.
Yeah, I'm going to stop you there. I, I've been an observer. That's completely inappropriate.
I spoke to multiple observers on Nantucket this summer.
Yeah, I, I'm, you're going to have to move on from that one.
I, I, I will move on from that one, but it just, we go through this every year. We're having to defend ourselves every year. Every other place in Massachusetts has these closures. I don't care. I, I, I just don't understand why we would keep why we wouldn't keep it the same. It, it makes sense to keep the same. You're doing a good job. You closed it three years. Or you opened it three years, you closed it four. I understand it's stress on you and it's stress on the department, which I'm sure is underfunded and understaffed. But at the end of the day, this is going to cause a rift between the, the community and, you know, the offshore community here. It's just, it doesn't make any sense to not just keep it the way it is. Is the six days really going to change the bottom line on the squid fishery? Are they going to really make that much more money? Is it going to turn their season from a season that's actually viable to something that's overly viable? I mean, I just don't understand what we're doing here. It seems like every winter we have to go through these meetings and it's something new that's pushed on, you know, us in this fishery and our water.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Jared, Jared, is that it for that topic?
And that's it for this topic. Uh, we could quickly go to scup and then move on to the ground fish issues.
Okay. Let's do that. Um, Jared, do you want to take this? It's kind of a technical regulatory proposal.
Yeah, I can, I can run through this real quick. Uh, the, the, the annual scup quota is, um, divided into three distinct periods, two federally managed, the winter one and the winter two period. And ones, uh, where the quota is allocated among the coastal states for the states to manage. This deals with the winter period federally managed fishery. Uh, the federal government sets trip limits for this and annually we, as a matter of practice, use, um, declaratory authority, which requires a two-week comment period and approval of the commission to simply set possession and landing limits consistent with the federal limits for this period during the October one through April thirtieth period. Uh, there is very little commercial fishing for scup in state waters, given, uh, the migration of the species. Um, the, the gear is available to take scup in large quantities, um, up to what the federal limits are, which are like typically about fifty thousand pounds during the winter one period and maybe about twenty-five thousand pounds during the winter two. So, you know, as a matter of practice, for as long as I've been doing this, which is over ten years now, we've set the limits for each of these periods consistent with the federal government. And in, in, in reducing the administrative burden of, of managing some of this, um, we're looking to just simply adopt a regulation that says that federal permit holders fishing in federal waters during these winter periods, we retain scup in accordance with the federal limits and set a two thousand pound baseline for, for the commercial retention of scup caught in state waters. Um, during that period, uh, that two thousand pound limit is correlates to the maximum allowed during the small mesh squid fishery, um, in April to June. And we wouldn't expect that they'd be catching scup in excess of two thousand pounds using any of the other gears, rod and reel, large mesh net, large net mesh or, uh, traps. So, so we think that that would be a, a, a fair baseline limit uh, for the winter one and winter two periods for retention of scup caught in state waters. And then federal permit holders would be allowed to land in accordance with whatever the federal government sets for their limit. So I'll take comments or questions on that. Joseph Tormay, I see you have your hand up.
I think Joseph wanted to comment on squid.
Oh, okay. Well, Joseph, you can comment on squid. You have to unmute yourself.
Oh, could you hear me?
We got you, Joseph.
All righty. Um, good evening. My name's Joe Tormay. I've been a year-round resident in Tucket for about fifteen years now. Um, avid recreational saltwater fisherman. Um, I fish all around the island. Pretty much for every saltwater fish species we have. I'm also the Nantucket Anglers Club, uh, current president and have been for the past two years. Um, have a current membership of about five hundred and twenty-five recreational saltwater fishermen um, who are year-round and summer residents. Um, a majority of our five hundred and twenty-five members are completely against this proposal for a week-long extension to the small mesh trawling for squid. Let alone this, uh, specific commercial squid fishery entirely in our local waters around Nantucket. Um, I mean, at this point, it's just been ongoing. And I mean, if we have to flood the DMF with, you know, phone calls, emails, letters, I mean, we have the amount of people to do that. Um, it could be our next step. Uh, I targeted strippers in and around the island, you know, for the past fifteen years around, you know, the vineyard, Chatham. And, uh, I mean, with this small mesh trawling, I mean, it's hands down, you know, better fishing all around these protected areas off of Chatham and Montemoy. Um, I mean, it's, you talk to the guys out there, the guys up at the club. I mean, it's just, you know, this, this squid trawling season kills us hands down. Um, and obviously, you know, like Pete mentioned before, you know, town meeting, they voted on this protection a couple of times. And now to attempt to, you know, end this style fishing, voting hundreds to one. Um, I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous how this is only allowed around Nantucket in the backside of the vineyard entirely. Um, the small mesh trawling for squid, it's just not needed for another week. Um, it's, it's detrimental to the squid population that, you know, like Ray said, and a lot of these other guys said is, it's one of our number one bait fish in the spring for these, uh, fisheries and fish migrating. Um, you know, it supports all those species. Um, and enough damage is done to bycatch the squid spawning cycles, the mops, the populations during the season as is. Um, the bycatch numbers, obviously even, you know, be, beginning to the middle of June obviously would be more significant. You know, making all the other fisheries more vulnerable, while the fish are at a, you know, peak migrating and heading to spawn in all of our local waters. Um, you know, the current allowable small mesh net trawler fishing methods, it's, you know, it's a thing of the past. You look all around the country, internationally, everywhere. Um, you know, they're all, they're, they've all switched already. Um, you know, if the, if the commercial small mesh, you know, fleet, if they fished everywhere else, you know, like they do with those methods. Um, you know, jigging with the lights at night, yeah, maybe an extension wouldn't be an issue, you know? Um, that's a whole nother story. Um, yeah, obviously we know there's the twelve-month protection, you know, covers New Bedford, Boston, Gloucester, Chatham, south side of the Cape. You know, why not, why not the vineyard in Nantucket? You know, instead now we're asking for a whole nother week. You know, that's, it's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. And, you know, all those other places are protected. You know, add another week to those areas. Give them one week in those areas, not us, you know, give us a break. Um, you know, our job specifically at the Anglers Club, you know, protect the local fisheries, represent it, be the best stewards we can be to the fisheries. You know, being the best representatives towards protecting the marine conservation for our kids and generations to come. I mean, that's our job. And one thing this week-long extension does, it doesn't do any of that, doesn't represent it. And it's not needed. It's not needed at all. But thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Keep getting back to the scup proposal. Um, are there any comments on, uh, the, the proposal uh, as drafted to adopt a two thousand pound limit uh, for a scup caught and retained in state waters during winter one, which is no, uh, which is October, November and December. And, uh, I'm sorry, winter one is January through April. April thirtieth and winter two is, is October through December.
I'm not seeing any hands. And Katie, you know, Almeida would have been the only person on now that I would have expected to comment.
All right.
We'll move back to the beginning and deal with ground fish.
Sounds good. Okay, um, these proposals, uh, are a combination of, uh, ground fish uh, measures, but also, uh, indirect measures, uh, to avoid entanglements of endangered, uh, right whales. So first we, we're going to talk about a proposal to, uh, to close, uh, gill netting, uh, during the period of January one, uh, through May, uh, to, uh, April thirtieth. Uh, I'm sorry, to May fifteenth, uh, to all state waters. And to set this up, I think we need to go through kind of a history of the gill net closures, uh, to date. And also we're going to review, uh, all the other closures because uh, it is a very confusing array, uh, very confusing, uh, way, set of layers of, of groundfish rules that are a combination of rules designed to protect, uh, protected species, but also for groundfish species. And also, uh, some gear specific, uh, rules as, as well. So some of it is species related and others gear related. So historically, we go back to the nineteen ninety-seven when, uh, the Cape Cod Bay Critical Habitat was first closed. Uh, that's a January through May fifteenth, uh, closure, and that still exists today. Um, we added, uh, a couple of, uh, extensions to that. And you see on the map there, there's that purple area uh, to, off of the Plymouth, uh, Sagamore, uh, area that was added in the early two thousands. And then in two thousand twenty-one, we added that peach colored area, uh, to go up to the north. And that's all because of known, uh, presence of right whales. Uh, if, you know, historically, uh, the surveillance program wasn't as, as rigorous as it is today. And once upon a time, we thought there were very few right whales, uh, west of that, that, uh, that westerns up and down line at seventy-thirty, uh, which, uh, bisects the canal going up to, uh, up to federal waters. But, uh, the, the evidence says, as such, uh, so, and otherwise in the last twenty-five years, we've seen, uh, you know, increased concentrations of right whales to the west of that line. So next slide. So we are proposing to take that closure, uh, all the, to all state waters. It would allow for the, for the, to be, uh, lifted, um, in some of those areas after May first, if the whales migrate out. Uh, and this is analogous to the closure that we've enacted for the lobster fishery. Lobster fishery is closed February through, uh, May fifteenth with the potential to roll it back to, uh, to April thirtieth uh, in the area of, um, you know, Chatham all the way to, uh, the New Hampshire border. Uh, this would reduce the risk of entanglement with right whales, especially in April and May, uh, in Mass Bay, which is a time when we have some co-occurrence of, of gill nets and right whales. And when we enacted the, the lobster gear closure last year, we got a lot of difficult questions, uh, you know, because we were trying to get every last vertical line out of the water. A lot of folks came to us and said, uh, what are you doing with, with that, the remnant gill net fishery? And so, uh, we are proposing to, uh, close, uh, that fishery all the way to New Hampshire. But at the same time, we're trying to, uh, give back, uh, some of the, uh, other, in some of the other areas that just slightly higher trip limits during the remainder of the year. Uh, and also, um, amend some of the other closures that are historic and may not be as critical. So next slide. Yeah, a little bit more history. The, uh, these are some more existing spawning closures in state waters. You can see that pink area that goes from the New Hampshire border all the way to Provincetown up to about one mile, one to two miles from shore. That's called the founder spawning closure that prohibits all, uh, net fishing and also line, line trawling, uh, to protect spawning winter. uh, to protect spawning winter flounder. You also have those cod conservation zones, which is the hatched areas in Massachusetts Bay uh, from, from, uh, the Nahant area out to the east, as well as a cod conservation zone up off of, uh, Manchester by the Sea, uh, and that was established, uh, in two thousand and nine. That's off of Marblehead. And those are, those are seasonal closures where we've defined, uh, the presence of large aggregations of spawning cod. Uh, there is, we don't know if we have as much evidence that those still exist, uh, as they were fished down, but those are longstanding closures that still are on the books, uh, that are historical protections of spawning cod. There's also a federal, uh, Mass Bay spawning protection area that we feel is worthwhile, uh, you know, matching, and that is the brown area that you can see uh, on the map. Um, and that is during the period, uh, April fifteenth through April thirtieth. And, uh, we think it would be logical to match that to, um, support the conservation intent of that closure. IBS two, the title of this slide is findings from the IBS two survey. IBS stands for industry-based survey. It was a state-funded program that was conducted twice, uh, once, uh, about twelve years ago, and once most recently completed two thousand and nineteen by Mike Adine, Bill Hoffman, Nick Buchanan, and others. And it, and it was designed to be a trawl survey that, that, uh, spanned the time period of late fall through the spring. And we did find, uh, the presence of spawning fish uh, during IBS one and IBS two during those months of, uh, March, April, and May. And so, we do have our eyes on the need to protect, uh, spawning cod during those time periods. May still.
I might add to this that we have seen the, a decrease of the overall abundance of spring spawners. But in that, a, April becoming a month of greater importance for spawning among those spring spawners that remain.
Okay, Jared, do you want to speak a little further about the cohorts? The winter cohort, the spring spawning cohort, and the fall/winter cohort.
Cohorts for cod. There's, there's the winter that occur, you know, November to January, the spawning activity occurs in shore. And then the spring, which is, uh, now April, maybe into July, this are the most, uh, most recent IBS two, but predominantly in April and May. Um, what, most of what we're seeing, uh, in this population is the fall spawning cohort, the, the spring spawning cohort has declined substantially, um, since the first IBS one, as you can see in, in the graph below, that it, there's, there was far less occurrence, um, with those fish. Um, but while that has declined, um, we are seeing April become more important to the spring spawning cohort. And if the Gulf of Maine cod is, will recover, or we're going to pursue a conservation strategy to help recover Gulf of Maine cod, it's critical to ensure both, um, spawning cohorts have provided protection, um, because as we've seen throughout of each cohort differently across time. So providing protections to both of them is critical to ensure, um, a potential for the stock to recover. Um, it gives it some, um, some flexibility, um, in that, that, that you're not entirely reliant on, on one cohort to provide all of the fish to the population.
Okay, thanks, Jared. You did a good job with that, better than I was handling it. Okay, so the proposal is to adopt an April fifteenth to April thirtieth commercial groundfish closure to protect spawning cod. And that would be, uh, in that, uh, that established, uh, area, uh, the, the pinkish-orange area off of the, uh, Nahand to Plymouth zone.
We'd also retain comment to extend it all the way north, uh, to the New Hampshire border, as there has been. Uh, IBS one, when the spring spawning cohort was at a, uh, higher biomass, the, uh, there, there were remnant, or there were spawning aggregations found off, uh, Cape Cod and up on the edge of Ipswich Bay on the state line. So in, in, in line with giving, providing additional protections to the, uh, to the spring spawning cohort, uh, we'd be also taking comment on potentially expanding that beyond that pink area in state waters throughout all that red-hashed area as well, um, to, to afford that additional protection.
Okay. All right, so this is more background. Uh, some of those closures, uh, historically have, uh, been designed to complement, uh, federal closures that were designed to reduce fishing mortality. Uh, you know, and most recently, uh, there's been some, uh, adjustments to that in two thousand and sixteen. And in two thousand and nineteen, there's been amendments to those seasonal closures. Jared, do you want to, I think we're good there.
So, most recently in, in twenty nineteen, we adopted this conditional April closure, um, which requires us to, the, the federal fishing year is May one through April thirtieth. And, um, we review, um, state waters' groundfish landings throughout the, that have occurred throughout the federal fishing year over the winter, when effort tends to be low due to closures and weather and, and ensure abundance of target species. And, um, determine if opening April would be to the, uh, uh, would put us out of line with, um, the federal set-asides or potentially trigger accountability measures for the federal fishery, the state waters' fishery. The federal government provides the state waters' fisheries for all New England states combined with set-asides. Massachusetts is the state that primarily lands against these set-asides. Um, and, and we try to manage our fisheries as best as possible to these set-asides stream, but we don't treat them like hard quotas where the fishery closes once it's reached. Instead, we try to manage through closures and trip limits to keep it at or around, to keep landings at or around those set-asides. And if we do exceed those set-asides and the federal quotas are fully utilized, then it triggers accountability measures for the federal fishery. Uh, with this in mind, we implemented this April closure to prevent, um, our state waters' fishery from triggering accountability measures for the broader federal fishery. Uh, in each of the past three years, we've rescinded the closure as our landings were not going to, to do that, uh, where we could keep the fishery open in April. Now with the proposed, uh, April spawning closure from fifteenth to the thirtieth, and the proposed gill net closure, uh, running January one through May fifteen, uh, it, it makes sense to rescind this April closure because it's mostly redundant, and there'll be less of a need for a failsafe, um, with these new closures.
And I would add, in that last bullet, Jared, that when you almost got to there, there, there has been substantial attrition in this, in the participation of this fishery. Um, you know, most of the gill net, uh, fishery is no longer active and, and, uh, there's very few, um, state waters-only draggers anymore. And so, we were fairly confident that we wouldn't be reaching the limits of those set-asides, uh, given this whole package that we're proposing here. So alternatively, or on the flip side, we're thinking that, uh, if, because the, the, we're talking about the gill net fishery, uh, with that, uh, extended closure, and the earlier, uh, the April closure as well. And given the performance of our landings relative to the set-asides for those two species, Gulf of Maine cod and Gulf Manhella tail flounder, we think it's reasonable to increase those trip limits for the fleet that's active. And that would be, um, increasing the cod limit from two to three hundred pounds and increasing the Gulf of Maine yellowtail uh, limit from two fifty to three hundred. Uh, we would, uh, we're really unable to do anything on the winter flounder uh, because that is a ASMFC standard of five hundred pounds. And also, the, um, as far as gray soul goes, uh, we have a seven hundred and fifty-pound trip limit, which we don't, uh, rarely meet. And, um, and as far as haddock, there isn't, uh, any, uh, any trip limit currently. So we, we think that these are, uh, good givebacks, uh, for the, for the active fleet, um, given these other proposals where we're, uh, taking some fishing opportunities away. The next proposal has to do with, uh, there's a old gill net closure, uh, off of Boston Harbor. And it's that, uh, cross-hatched area that you can see on the, on the map. And it was enacted back in nineteen eighty-eight and, and response to a, uh, a really unexpected, uh, you know, surge in, in, uh, in gill net fishing by, uh, by a new group of fishermen that had, had entered the fleet. And, uh, there was a lot of bycatch of lobsters and even some illegal lobster take, uh, that was, uh, was, it was quite, quite dynamic back then. And, um, we were petitioned, uh, by, I think lobstermen at the time to, to close that area as a means to control the activity. That particular fleet of, of gill netters, uh, they, they, it was a, it was a, a group of fishermen that, uh, that came on the scene, but also left. It's, it's, it wasn't the traditional gill netters that have been, uh, that were active before that time or have been active since. And so, uh, we're, we're proposing that we lift that closure as it's, uh, it's, it's no longer necessary. Uh, that particular closure was enacted back at a time before we even had limited entry in the gill net fishery. And, uh, through limited entry and the inability to transfer gill net permits, the, the fishery is, is, um, seeing a lot of attrition. And we don't feel that, that, that there's any potential to, to have that situation repeat itself. So we're proposing to lift that closure.
All right, Dan, that covers all of the groundfish-related proposals. It may be beneficial, uh, to go back to the right whale proposal and have Bob Glenn speak a little bit to how this fits in more broadly to the, uh, recent litigation, our incidental take permit application, and the ongoing Atlantic Large Whale Take Reduction Plan, uh, regulatory developments.
Sure. Bob, can you do that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Uh, thanks, Dan. Yeah, this, this particular closure, um, is, is aimed at trying to mitigate the potential entanglement risk for North Atlantic right whales in, in mass, uh, state waters, uh, during a time period when Massachusetts hosts the largest known aggregation of right whales in the world. Um, in recent years, uh, the most recent population assessment for right whales that just came out is, uh, it's down to three hundred and thirty-six animals. Um, this puts it in, as a, in the classification as a critically endangered animal. Uh, and one that is, is, you know, facing a lot of, um, scrutiny right now, and, and also one that's facing a lot of, you know, ma, requiring a lot of fisheries manag, management generally throughout the region. Um, and especially in Massachusetts, since we host, um, the largest aggregation in this time period. Um, part of this, the, the several ongoing processes here, one is, Jared mentioned the Atlantic Large Whale Take Reduction Team in, in the Take Reduction Plan. Um, that is kind of the body that advises National Marine Fisheries Service on ways to reduce risk entanglement and eventually uh, achieve what is called potential PBR, potential biological removal. And that, that's currently set at zero point seven, which means it, um, that there's, it'll, basically, the population will, will persist and, and recover if we remove, um, less than one whale, in this case, point seven whales per year. Um, currently, uh, the number of whales that are die per year, mortality per year in the U.S. is in excess of, of twelve or so. And so, and that, that trend has continued for some time. So we're, we're well above PBR targets. And as a result, our federal government is required to take action. Um, that's manifested itself primarily in, in the first round at focused on the lobster fishery, uh, which was required to, uh, reduce entanglement risk by sixty percent. Um, that has recently been updated at, after recent population estimates to ninety percent. In phase two, which they initiated, but then stopped because of the most recent decline in right whales, they're planning to target reductions in the gill net and other pot-trap fisheries. Um, and that the initial indication was that gill net fisheries would be required to reduce, uh, entanglement risk by sixty percent as well. Now, it's quite likely that that number is going to go to a much higher percent reduction, much like it has for, um, pot fisheries. In addition to that, as you're all aware, Massachusetts, uh, was, uh, was sued over violations of the Endangered Species Act. Um, specifically for, uh, unauthorized takes under section seven of the Endangered Species Act. And what that means is because we've had takes of, of, of whales, uh, we are required to, we were ordered by Judge Talwani in federal court in Boston to obtain an incidental take permit. The take permit allows us to have not, you know, well, we're hoping if we, should we achieve getting the take permit, it will allow us to have non-lethal takes of right whales. In this case, a take would be a non-lethal interaction uh, for any activity that's covered in the, in the take permit. So this case would be fishing activity. Um, and so the, the combination of the litigation management initiatives from National Marine Fisheries Service and as well as, um, uh, our, our quest to mitigate, you know, when we try to apply for and achieve an incidental take permit, we have to demonstrate to National Marine Fisheries Service that we've addressed all potential sources of mortality. And so, uh, the combination of those three things are why we're targeting, uh, this proposal, um, to expand gill net protections. Um, gill nets are a little bit of a, a difficult, uh, tricky beast a little bit in that, uh, unlike others, you know, other methods in gill, for the gill net fishery that's been used to successfully mitigate takes for things like harbor porches, harbor porpoise, primarily through the use of, of pingers. Pingers are not effective on large baleen whales. Um, they, they don't, uh, echolocate. And, and as a result, that, that pingers is not an effective deterrent for large whales. So we're kind of, we don't have a lot of gear modification options in this case. And so, um, that's largely why, uh, the primarily focus has been on time-area closures.
Okay, um, so Jared, why don't we, um, why don't we open the floor for any, uh, clarifying questions? I guess, and comments. I think the, the audience is really small. I guess we could take them both at the same time if you'd like.
Sure. Um, so I'm going to leave this screen up, but if many of the commenters want me to go to a specific slide, just let me know. This provides an overview of the, uh, proposals that we're setting forth tonight, um, from, you know, the first bullet down to the fifth bullet. And, uh, we can take comments on all of them collectively, or just one at a time to vary on how folks want to proceed. So if you would like to make a comment, you can use the raise hand function. I will recognize you and, um, and you can unmute yourself to begin. Oh, Dan, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
I think we've got some gill net fishermen on the, in the list, no?
Chris is here now.
Yep.
Chris, you're recognized. You're going to unmute yourself.
Hang on. Can you hear us?
Yes. I could hear you, and then it looks like you're muted again. So if you hit the microphone, you should be unable to unmute yourself.
Try that.
Can you hear me now, Jared?
Loud and clear, Chris.
Yeah, um, I could go on about the gill net stuff and all the whale stuff, but I guess my big comment is, um, years ago, you guys suggested to go down to four hundred pounds. And the gill netters said, go down to two hundred on the cod to keep the numbers in check. Um, I propose to go up to four hundred pounds because you said it before when we were over the numbers. Now we're under the numbers. Um, uh, my proposal is a increase to four hundred pounds. And on the yellowtails, yeah, a fifty-pound increase isn't that much at sixty cents. So my proposal, three fifty or four hundred, something a little more. You're taking quite a bit of time away from us. 350 or 400, something a little more. You're taking quite a bit of time away from us and. Yeah, that's all I want to say, I guess.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I'm not seeing any other hands raised, Dan.
Okay, I, I recognize that a lot of what we presented tonight is pretty complex. Feel free to review this proposal on the YouTube and also to reach out to us if you want us to send you the presentation. And feel free to. Ask clarifying questions or get back to us over the next week. You can reach out to us through the Marine Fish Mailbox. I think a lot of you have Jared's number as well. And, and I welcome folks to, to, you know, put the comments in. Your comments do matter. The Marine Fisheries Commission is sensitive to the, to the needs of the, of the fishing industry. And we're trying to be as. As accommodating as possible while meeting those conservation mandates. So thank you, Chris Chadwick, for showing up and commenting. And we look forward to, you know, kind of working with you as, as one of the, one of the sole survivors of this fishery. So thank you for coming. And, and commenting. So I guess that's it. If other, I guess. It's early. If, if there's other issues that people need to want to raise with us while we're here. We could certainly close the hearing and, and sort of stay on the call. You've got a bunch of DMFers here. It's a lot of, a lot of knowledge still on the call. Anybody has any other, any other issues? We, we used to be able to have one-on-one conversations at the end of hearings. After when you learned a lot, but you can turn off the recording if anybody has any questions they want to ask us. We're certainly willing to stick around.
Dan, I'm going to end. If you want to close the hearing, I'll end the recording now.
Yeah, okay.